Hi.
Hi, Chris. How are you?
You got in before me.
Yeah, I'm ever so clever.
I try all different kinds of things and I always seem like I'm struggling with this.
Yeah, well, you know, I always forget the exclamation point at the end of the password. I never see it even. I'm only seeing the top of your head. Can you switch your...
Oh.
Hi there. Hello, Chris. Let me see your hand. How is it?
Oh, that's the scar from it.
Not bad.
It's not bad. You know, what's interesting though is it almost hurts as much as it did before.
Oh, charming.
Yeah, and I said to the... He said it just takes time because they had to cut all kinds of nerves and stuff.
Yuck.
I don't know.
Ouch, ouch.
I gotta get up and then get into my meeting minutes. I understand Justin called you today or so.
Yeah, he came by.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's because he's unhappy or it's more money there.
He says it's not that much more money, but he says that he likes that there's more structure.
And he's not a structured guy.
No, he isn't a structured guy, but he is better at... I have to rename myself. He's better at, I guess, at taking direction than at being the boss.
Yeah, I could maybe... Yeah, I could with that if he doesn't get sidetracked every five seconds.
Yeah, exactly. So, but the trouble... The thing that worries me, I mean, I'm happy for him. That's great. I mean, the fact that everybody leaves me is very irritating.
I know. We gotta start all over again.
I know. Every... You know, first I lose Roger, then I lose Bruce, then I lose Justin. It's like, okay, I'm really getting a complex here, but don't you go anywhere. No retirement for you, kiddo. But what I am concerned about is that Wealth Fleet understands that they need a full-time building inspector. I do not want Richard Stevens on a per diem basis.
Oh, I know it. I know. Because, yeah, that doesn't work out.
No, it does not work.
And, yeah, too much has been falling on my shoulders lately. I mean, I could have... Oh, let me get this recording off.
Okay, yeah. Okay, take the recording off, yeah. So, basically, I'm waiting for seven o'clock and Ben. I'm seeing Andy.
Hey, Andy.
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 There he is.
Hey, Andy.
Can you hear me?
I can indeed. We're just waiting for seven o'clock and for Ben.
Well, my Apple phone says it's seven o'clock.
Interesting. Yeah, Verizon does as well. Okay, it is seven o'clock. It is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We are all here. The first case is 2007 Starboard Tech Holdings, but the attorney for that case is not here. So I'm wondering if we want to move to 2010 and then come back to Starboard Tech.
Well, ask my...
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay, all right.
I'm with me.
All right, so we will move straight to 2010. David and Dale Rowe, 735 Chequeston Road, map 19, parcel 112, application for special permit under Wealthy Zoning Law 6.1.6.5.1D for 326 square feet, second level addition including a 51-square footprint expansion. And Jay, you're on.
Okay, I was hoping that...
Set the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have the board set and I did not have to that. The board is myself, Trevor, Will, Retha, and Janet. Is that five? Yeah, yes.
Okay, I was hoping that Dale and David would be here as well.
They're here.
They're here.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Anyway, so Dale and David are here. I'm Jay Horowitz. For the record, I'm there. I'm representing them in this case. I'm the architect for the project. What we're proposing is a 51-square foot addition to the footprint, to the existing footprint, which gives us a better entryway and provides new floor area at the second floor. We're also going to provide a good set of stairs at the second floor. We're providing a hallway, bath, and bedroom. And there is a loft up there that has a vertical ladder to reach it, but we're going to raise it. We're refaming the second floor framing system. So, as it turns out, we're able to get better headroom and an expansion of space with only just over two feet of increase in height of the building, volumetric expansion within the setback. You can see that on sheet four of my drawings over on the right is... That's illustrated with the fond memories of Roger Putnam, who insisted on having it on every plan. The... What we seek is a special permit for the extension into the front yard, which is well back from the easterly portion of the footprint. The addition... Say, Sharon, did you get to share that other site plan with the other members of the board?
I have it. I can share it on the screen when you're ready.
Well, it does show that we're six inches off the property line with the northeastern corner of the garage. The addition that we're adding in the front, which is marked by a heavy line, it's right directly north of the word existing, where it says existing dwelling, is 13 foot six plus or minus off the northerly property line.
Sharon.
I'm gonna share it right now.
But I have two things to say. Number one, I keep seeing a telephone and Jay... We lose Jay. Or he's up in the...
I'm up here. I'm up here. I don't know what the telephone...
Why is it a telephone?
A telephone. It means somebody called into the meeting instead of...
Yeah, it's Ben Zander. I called in a few minutes ago.
Oh, okay, Ben. I'm sorry. We went ahead and did Jay, if that's okay with you.
And then the second question...
Hold on. Would it be possible to break and do my continuance first and get me off the line? Is that possible, Sharon?
Jay, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, good. I'll go back to...
Thank you all.
All right.
That's my second question when we get back to that.
Okay, we're back now.
We have to somehow table this for a few minutes.
I'm still here.
And Andy, you had another question?
Yeah, but it was on the other matter, so...
Oh, okay, so we'll go back to... All right, now let me make that... Go back to the continuance then, which is 2007 Starboard Tech Holdings. The board is Will, Trevor, me, Retha, and Janet, and it is Ben's case. Go for it, Ben.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to talk to you all. We're still waiting for the planning board to actually hold a meeting and take up your referral to the planning board. We really don't want to be in front of you before the planning board has had a chance to, you know, weigh in and provide guidance on the project. I really have no problem withdrawing without prejudice if the board is willing to waive the reapplication fee. It might take the pressure off. The only concern I have is Jerry Parent had indicated that if we just withdrew, we'd have to go back to this board and have you refer it back to the planning board again on a referral basis for them to take it up, which sounds procedurally a little silly. So I'm just not sure how to handle that.
Is there any way we could...
I don't want to...
Rancho with some sort of a continuance, Ben?
You can, but it's not really fair to your board because, you know, you have to keep putting it on the agenda. I mean, you know, maybe if you gave us a 60-day continuance, you know, instead of a 30-day continuance, that would give us enough time to get in front of the board. But if this board is adamant that you would like us to withdraw it, we'll do it. I just don't want to have to refile and then have to come back before this board for the purposes of this board referring it to the planning board and then waiting for the planning board and then coming back to this board again. If we knew that it could just be in front of the planning board even after we withdrew it, that would be fine.
I see the problem. Well, the trouble is, when we keep continuing it, we keep having it on the agenda. We keep insisting that butters come and attend the meeting.
Right, I know.
And I, you know, and I know there are butters who are concerned, and I would like them to have... Only have to come when we're really going to act on it. So, do you have any sense from Jerry as to when they plan to meet?
No, you know, his statement to me was, you know, "We really don't want to take this up except live because of the amount of interest that's been generated." What I would suggest maybe is that we request a 60-day continuance.
That's a little better.
And then I talked to Jerry and say, "Look, there's only one word. Need to take this up within 60 days. You've got to get them something between now and 60 days." And I think that should give them enough time to either figure out a way to hold a live meeting, which may not be possible, or else just, you know, hold a virtual meeting. Really, this is just a matter of them looking at the site plan and providing us with some guidance as to parking and traffic and movement and things like that. So, I would request, just to make this simple, and Jay, thank you for waiting, I would just request that the board give us a 60-day continuance.
Okay, let me talk to the board about that. Will, what does that sound like?
I have no objection to that, but I think we should make it clear that... I think we should make it clear that if it doesn't happen this time around, in 60 minutes, we want to hear the case. And if we don't hear the case, it's going to be, you know, with respect there, they would withdraw the matter without prejudice.
Okay.
I think that's fair, Will. I think that's absolutely fair.
Trevor?
I'm fine with what Will just suggested.
Okay, Retha?
I agree.
Janet?
I agree as well. Do we have any... Through you, Sharon, to Ben, do we have any indication that the planning board is willing to hold a Zoom meeting?
No, in fact, you know, in my conversations with Jerry, I get the sense that they... That he really doesn't want to do this virtually. But, you know, I think they're going to have to come to terms with that. You know, they can't hold an applicant out for, you know, four or five months. So, you know, I'll have a conversation with them after this meeting, you know, tomorrow and the next day, just to talk it through with them. But, you know, I really do want to give the planning board the chance to work with us on this because I think they're going to be able to provide us with some guidance, which I think is needed in this project, so...
I agree.
Andy?
Yeah, I agree with the continuance, but Ben, I have two questions. One has to do with your promise that you would provide us with a plan that showed the actual parking.
Yes.
That's the first thing. And I assume you will when you come to us.
Yes.
And second, I'm not even sure if this is appropriate, but I know that the historic commission held a meeting, and the meeting was based on... The subject of the meeting was the... Or were the plans, alternate plans by the Cape Cod Commission. And I don't... I mean...
Yeah, I'll wait. I'm ready to call on that one. Yeah, well, to answer your question, to address those in order. First of all, we do anticipate a revised site plan because we think that the planning board is going to want us to probably separate commercial traffic from residential traffic and maybe keep the commercial traffic, you know, from coming in off Briar Lane. And I think it's doable. I think you'll see a plan that works better. But we need to have the... We need to have the planning board review that and give us the comments before we give that to you. So you'll see that in advance of your meeting. The second is that, you know, the historic heard this project, you know, without very much discussion invoked an 18-month demolition delay, which is the maximum penalty, which puts the matter not in front of them anymore. It's just... It's done. They've taken their action. There's nothing in front of them. But they insist on having repeated meetings to design what they think would be an appropriate structure, which isn't really their job. They've had the commission present designs, they send them to our client, and we're just kind of letting them do whatever they want to do. But it's not their job to design a structure. It's their job to see whether what they think we're doing is appropriate and to impose a delay. So, as far as I'm concerned, if they want to spend their time and energy on this project, they're welcome to. But I don't think it has anything to do with this project. I think this board reviews what's in front of you. And you don't review it with an eye towards whether it's, you know, historically appropriate or is the right color or has the right gable. You review it with regard to scale and massing and traffic and safety and noise and all those things. So, does that address the question?
That answers my question. Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so what we're talking about here is a two-month delay continuing to our October meeting. And at that point, we either have a recommendation from the planning board or we go in one of two directions. We either withdraw or we act on it. Is that a fair sense of what we're talking about here?
Fair to me. Although I'm sure we're not going to act on it because Ben's going to withdraw, but...
Yeah, right. I mean, I, you know, the bylaw says that we must refer it to the planning board. It does not say whether it ever comes back out. But at the same time, I think the planning board has real value added to this project, and so I'm very reluctant to move without them. But I also don't want to keep seeing it on the agenda for another continuation, so... All right.
Well, thank you all for hearing the request.
Sure. So I need a motion to continue to the October 3rd meeting?
So moved.
All right, I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, so then it is... I need an affirmative vote. So, Will?
I vote in the affirmative.
Trevor?
I think October 3rd is a Saturday.
No, October 8th, I said.
No, you said 3rd.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's October 8th.
That's close.
That's close. October 8th, yes.
Affirmative vote for October 8th.
Okay.
Affirmative as well for October 8th.
October 8th. Retha?
Yes.
And Janet?
I.
And myself, I. Okay, all right. We will continue to October 8th. Best of luck with it, Ben.
Thank you all. And Jay, thank you for... Thank you for letting me jump ahead of you.
Okay, Ben.
All right. Good night, everybody. Take care.
Good night. Okay, so Jay, you're back. Just to refresh everybody's memory, we are on...
You just put the plant plan up.
I'll put it back up.
I think I was asking a question, Jay.
Yeah, okay.
I think the gist of this is, and tell me if I'm wrong, that is that you've got a non-conforming use already with respect to the front setback.
Non-conforming building, non-conforming use.
I'm sorry. Yeah, and now you're going to make it... You're going to make the setback even smaller.
If you look at where I'm putting my addition, it's not... It's well back of the most egregious closeness to the property line. It's the... I wish I could just point it out, but there's an arrow. It says proposed addition, and the arrow goes straight over to where it is. It's 51 square feet. And it's well back of the worst case, which is the northeast corner of the garage. The existing garage is only six inches off the property line, but we're putting it much further down.
Is this where it is, the garage part? Am I arrow in the right spot for that?
Up to the other corner, Sharon.
Yeah, the other corner.
Where the 0.5 is.
Where the... There.
Nope.
Nope, over here.
Nope.
No, no, up here. To the east, to the north and east.
It says 0.5.
You're getting closer, Sharon.
I thought I was close, but over here. I see, right there. I got it. Yeah, right there.
That's the northeast corner of the existing garage.
Okay.
Which says proposed addition is where our new entry addition and second floor addition is going, okay? If you look on the site plan that's with my...
With your application?
With my application. And I apologize for this, but I had to make this filing date, and I didn't have the plan that you're looking at now.
Yeah.
So I took the plan that we used for the conservation commission and got it to a reasonable scale. And the red marks show like setbacks and the red marks in the building show our second floor addition.
Okay.
So I hope that gets everybody on the same page.
All right.
And what... I got to catch up with where I was before, sorry.
Sure, it's okay.
We're doing extensive remodeling. We're proposing new stairs, which lead up to the second floor where there's a hallway, bath, and bedroom. And what's up there now is a loft with very low headroom, but since we're reframing the second floor, it turns out to be a net increase in height from average existing grade of only two feet, two and a half inches. And so what we seek is a special permit for this expansion, which is both volumetric and a small, very small part of the footprint. By the way, my numbers are on the lack coverage floor area schedule, which is on sheet one of my architectural plan. Just so you know, we're still 9.53% lack coverage. In any case, we're... What we're seeking is a special permit for these expansions, which, let's see. And there is no increase in bedrooms. There's a minimal increase in habitable floor area and a minimal increase in height. And we also have approval by the conservation commission. So we feel that the project enhances the look of the building and is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what already exists.
Okay.
You know, that's it for me for the moment.
Thank you. Okay, Chris, did we have any letters on this? Chris? Chris?
I did it again.
Where'd she go?
Chris?
No.
No, no, okay.
There were no letters.
No letters. Okay, thank you. All right.
I somehow got out of the meeting again.
You're there.
You're there.
You're there. You probably hit something that says "show speaker view only."
I don't know. Well, if you say I'm there, then I'm there.
You're here.
You're here. You're here.
Find something.
You're here. Trust me, Jay, you're here. I'm going to go to Trevor. Trevor, do you have any questions for Jay?
No, this seems pretty cut and dry to me. Yeah, I don't have any questions or any issues with it.
Okay, Will?
No, since the additional footprint is much less... Is not closer to the line than most of the building is. I have no problem with this request.
Janet?
I have a couple of questions just because I'm confused. I'm still a little confused about what you're doing. I'm just looking at the conservation commission plan that you have, and there's a little square in red that says "proposed five-and-a-half-foot-by-six-foot addition." Is that accurate?
It's actually eight feet.
But that's not accurate.
It's on my... Well, this was done by Bennett Environmental for the conservation commission. What I, like I mentioned before, I used it mainly because I wanted to make the filing deadline, and this was all I had.
I know. That's just... It's just that that's all I had to look at until just now.
Yeah, no, but if you look at sheet one of my architetsals,
Yeah.
you'll see that the dimensions are there. They're kind of small, but it's eight foot... It's six foot four by eight feet.
Which plan is that, Jay?
Sheet one of my architetsals.
Which one?
Which sheet number?
Sheet one.
Number one, okay.
I wish somebody could tell me how I could get my video back.
And so, say it again. It's 6.4 feet by eight feet?
Six foot four by eight feet. Comes out to just under 51 square feet.
And that's crawl space? Is that what?
It is a correct... What you're looking at there, we've done a set of construction drawings, of which these are part of, reduced part of. And that, you're looking at a crawl space, yes.
I still don't understand, then, what you're actually doing because... And I don't mean to make... I need to learn how to read these plans, too. So you said the existing second floor loft space is 191 square feet.
The existing, yes.
Yes, and that the proposed is going to be 386 square feet.
Correct.
Means an addition of 195 square feet in floor area.
Yes.
I can't figure out where that 195 is in relation to the 151.
Well, it's not like...
Floor versus coverage. Got it. Okay, so the code is...
Yeah, this has nothing to do...
Yeah.
This is the volumetric part of what I'm asking for.
Now I understand.
It's not... We're not... We're staying within the footprint of... It's not, we're not, we're staying within the footprint of the building except for the small piece that I mentioned before.
Is that mostly roof overhang or?
Uh, no, that's floor area.
An actual, okay, all right, I understand now, got it.
Great.
And better than me. So you're adding coverage on a, for a crawl space in the front of the building? And is that in initial, another intrusion into the front setback or?
Excuse me, can I have that again?
It, the 51 feet of crawl space is like an additional intrusion into the front setback, yes?
Um, additional, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, where was I? I had Janet, I talked to Will. Rita?
That was my question about crawl space.
Crawl space, yeah. Okay, Andy?
Yeah, so my question is, as the newbie here, um, I'm trying to figure this. I, I don't understand, Jay, why you're asking for a special permit. Can you, can you answer that question? A simple.
Well, uh, you know, the person. I think if I, if I had gotten together with, uh, Justin, our building inspector, he might have, uh, he might have, he might have given it to me. But, um, as far as the law goes, it's definitely a, uh, a, a volumetric increase within the setback. And it's definitely an intrusion, although small.
Okay, so the, the, just tell me the intrusion is.
And it's an extent, it's, it's a, it's a, uh, you know, an, an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, building.
Okay, so the intrusion is the proposed crawl space area there on your first drawing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're, but you're still within the, you're still.
I don't go any further than, 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 than the rest, than the northerly part of the building. That is true. But, um.
I, I guess I, I need to learn something, but I don't, won't do it a year.
Well, I mean, it, it helps.
You're still with, well within lot coverage, but you're volumetric, you've.
Right, I'm not asking, yeah. The intrusion is still an intrusion.
Yeah.
It, it works for me to tell you that it's way south of the property line compared to the, uh, northern, to the easterly part of the building.
Where it's, where it's worse, yeah.
But that, that helps us, but it doesn't, you know, but I still need, me, my clients and myself would feel better if we got a special permit. We feel we have more protection.
Fine, I mean, I'm not voting on this, but I still.
It's essentially an, uh, a, an increase in the non-conformity, however small, in both the front setback and in the, the massing on the setback, which is the other, the other piece of this.
You know, I, I mean, I've been here before with volumetric, um, as some members of the board, you know, I was here about a year ago with a, something similar. I mean, you know, I don't know whether Justin would have given it to me. But, um, it was so hard to try and get together with him and put, to have a meeting or anything, so I just went ahead, uh, and, and filed.
Yeah, okay. All right, did I hear from everybody? Um, does anybody have any further questions? Anybody from the audience? Hello, Mr. and Mrs. Rowe? Who have any questions?
Well, we're happy to answer any questions. Basically, we're replacing the loft, which is only accessible by a ladder with a staircase.
Right, that seems sensible to me. Okay, then I guess I need a mo, yes, Janet?
Actually, I do have one more question. I forgot all about it. This is on the assessor's, I mean, it's a, it's a non-conforming lot as well. So on the assessor's, um, card, it says it's a three-bedroom house. And, but you've marked the addition as a fourth bedroom. Is that?
We have four-bedroom septic system.
Okay. I mean, you've, you'll take that up with the health department, the board health.
Yeah, we, we have a four-bedroom septic system.
Okay.
Cool. All right, then I need a motion to go to findings.
I'll move to go to findings.
Okay, second?
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, all right, Will seconds. All right, so try these out and, you know, I was playing with numbers for a while, so listen carefully just in case. This application seeks permission under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.5.1B to construct a 360-square-foot second-level addition on a previously existing non-conforming dwelling.
What was the dimension you gave?
Uh, 364, 60, 386 square foot. Second-level addition. Uh, the addition would increase the second floor area from 191 square feet to 386 square feet, an increase of 50.5%. The lot is in the R1 district. The lot is a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure, having been built in 1950, according to the assessor's office. The existing non-conformities regarding the structure are inadequate lot area, um, 18,925 square feet, where 30,000 square feet is required, an intrusion into the front setback, .5 feet, where 30 feet is required, and side setback, 24.5 square feet, where 25 square feet is required. There will be a slight volumetric increase within the front setback. Is that correct? Not the side, right? Just the front? Okay, there will be a 51-square-foot expansion of the current footprint into the front setback. There will be no change in use. The use conforms with the objectives of the R1 district, as stated in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2. There were no appearances or correspondence in support of or in opposition to the application. The roads, drainage, and other public services are adequate for the project. The project has received approval from the Conservation Commission. The board has found that pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.3, scenic views from public ways have, and developed properties have been considerably treated. Reasonable efforts have been made to minimize visibility of parking and service areas from public roads. Traditional public access to and along the shoreline has been maintained. The board found, has found that the proposed alteration will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the district objectives for the district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.
Sharon, could you go back to the very beginning where you listed those dimensions again? Because I'm not 100% sure that's right.
All right, um, the first one was the 386-square-foot le, second-level addition. Is that right?
Well, I mean, we're really only, we're only adding 195 square feet, but, uh, you know, I wouldn't.
Okay, so we should say 195, 191-square-foot addition. That's what we should say.
That's the existing loft.
195 square foot.
195 square foot addition.
I mean, if you want to word it that way, that's actually what we're doing.
All right, yeah. Then we go from 191 square feet to 386 square feet.
Yeah, existing is 191.
Okay, yeah, so and we're adding 195.
Yes.
Good, okay.
Total 386.
And that is still an increase of 50.5%. Okay, the other place where there were numbers is that the lot area is 18,925 square feet, where 30,000 is required. And the front setback at the worst spot is .5 feet, where 30 feet is required.
The number I have for lot area is 18,264.
According to his, is there some, is there some other, is the?
The assessor's card.
You know, the assessor's is different than Jay's, is different from the site plan, so which one shall we go with?
I go with the site plan every time.
Okay.
The assessor?
Well, the assessor's, um, cards have a lot of misinformation I have found over the years.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going with 18,264. Well, one thing the assessor is, is that they think every house in Wellfleet that was not built in recent time was built in 1950.
It's either 1950 or 1980, depending on the house you're.
Depending on, on who did it, yeah.
But, uh, in any case, the 18,264 I feel better about since.
Okay.
That's, that's what my lot, lot coverage, uh, schedule shows.
Does, that's why we had different numbers on the map. Okay, 18,264. And then the intrusion is .5 feet, where 50 is required, and 24.5, where's 25 is required. Correct?
I don't know if it's that.
And that, and there's a 51-square-foot expansion of the current footprint.
Yeah. The 24.5 is existing, that's not anything.
Yeah, existing, where 25 is required, it's not changing. It's just that it isn't conforming. I thought it was, but it isn't.
Yeah, I, I did too. The, the surveyor says no.
The surveyor said no, yeah, you're off by half a foot.
And where is that?
On the sides.
That's on.
The sides, they're just off half a foot on the, on the two side setbacks.
On the easterly side, he's got a 20. And that's, that's just to a deck, it's not in the building.
Yeah, and it's not, you know, it's not affecting the, the project, but it is, just for the record, those are the non-conformities on the lot at the moment. Yeah. And those were the only numbers I had. Anything? Anything else? Good. All right. And I need a motion to accept the findings.
So I shall move.
Will has moved. I need a second?
Second.
Janet seconds. Um, and, uh, all in favor of accepting the findings, I'll go back to my list of the board. Will?
Uh, yes.
Trevor?
Yeah.
Rita? And Janet?
Yes.
And I will say yes. And now I need a motion to grant the special permit based on the findings.
I'll move.
Trevor moves. I need a second?
I'll second.
Will seconds. All in favor. Janet?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, we have to do that, Jay. It turns out that on a virtual meeting, we have to do a voice vote of every.
I, I, I get it.
Every vote.
You might note, for the record, that it was unanimous.
Unanimous voice vote, yes. All right, I can't stamp things for you. I can't hand you anything. You'll have to figure that out with Chris.
Is Chris still there?
Chris is here, she's just muted. Unmute yourself, Chris.
Well, I'm gonna, um, oh, she's not listening.
Okay, I'm on.
Yeah, she's on.
Chris, um, kinda, send me an email. Tell me what I need to send to you. I'll send it to the, to the, uh, to the West Main Street building.
Yeah, we, I will need to have in my files that site plan for sure, that the.
The new, the new site plan, the one I just got yesterday afternoon.
Other than that, I think I have everything.
Okay, all right, great. I'll send you a couple of copies of that.
Thank you.
Everybody.
All right.
Nice to see you, Mr. and Mrs. Rowe.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
All right, good night.
Bye, Jay.
Good night, Jay.
Welcome to the, uh, board, Andy.
Thank you.
You gonna sit on the, uh, on the housing project?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I didn't think so.
That might be.
Yeah, we, we're sorry to lose you.
Yeah, I'm sorry to lose myself. That was fun.
All right, have a good one, guys.
All right.
Bye, Jay.
Bye, bye, Jay. All right, we have minutes. Board, stay a minute while we, because I think we have minutes to, to approve, right, Chris?
Chris.
Yes, the July, was it 17? I can't remember the date.
Uh, it was July, um, 9th.
9th, okay.
Minutes of July 9th. I need a motion to approve those minutes.
I shall move.
All right, second?
Second.
And Rita seconds. All in favor. Janet?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
And Will?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, Chris, you got the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We're done with that one. Did you hear my neighborhood howling in the background? Or did I block it out? I could tell it was.
What was the noise?
It was, I could tell it was 7:30. My neighborhood howls at 7:30.
Oh, right.
Appears to be a beautiful sunset out there.
Yes, it does appear to be a beautiful sunset. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Today. Motion to adjourn.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
And that was.
That was Andy.
That was Andy, and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Janet says aye, Will says aye, Rita?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Sharon, aye.
Okay.
Okay, we're done.
Good night, all.
Good night, all. Chris, um, let me know when I need, I will email you these findings?
Yeah, I'm gonna work tomorrow.
Okay, I will email them now so that you have them, while I remember the numbers.
And then get the decision done next week.
Okay, very good. And let me know when I need to sign them.
Okay.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good night.
All right, good night.
Thank you all. Miss you. Someday we'll see each other for real.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, bye-bye.